Good evening. I would like to call to order the October 11th, 2022 School Board Meeting at 6:01 PM. Ms. Marsan, would you please take the role?
Mrs. Barker?
Here.
Mrs. Bell?
Here.
Mr. Kuescher?
Here.
Mr. Lackner?
Here.
Mrs. McCabe?
Here.
Mr. McNally?
Here.
And Mrs. Fairgreave?
Here. Please stand for the pledge. Okay, moving to item two A, there are no citizen comments at this time. So then we'll proceed to item number three, reports to the board, starting with the superintendent's report.
Thank you, Mrs. Fairgreave. Tonight, we, the superintendent's report will be a little different. Tonight is a night of celebration for three of our schools. And I'm actually going to hand it back to Board President Fairgreave to introduce our schools and for the board recognition of each of our schools.
Okay, thank you, Dr. Gordon. On behalf of the Board of Education for Community Union School District 303, I would like to congratulate Fox Ridge Early Childhood Center, Norton Creek Elementary School, and St. Charles North High School for their recent accomplishments. I would also like to invite the administrators and other members of each of our schools to come forward as I share more information about your accomplishments.
Now would be a good time. And your teams can come up if they want. I like that.
But I don't think they do. Yeah, I think they're, they're good, it looks like. Well, on behalf of the board, we are proud to share that the District 303 Early Childhood Program at Fox Ridge achieved the Gold Circle of Quality Rating from the Illinois State Board of Education and Accelerate Illinois based on the most recent monitoring results. Gold Circle programs meet or exceed specific quality benchmarks on learning environment, instructional quality, and all administrative standards, group size and ratios, qualifications, and professional, professional development. Congratulations to the team at Fox Ridge, led by Director Jennifer Mersou, along with their students and families on this huge achievement.
Thank you. Do I have to turn this on or is it on? It's on. Okay. Thank you so much, Dr. Gordon and the school board members. I did, was gonna give a little background information on the award, but you did a fantastic job explaining the Gold Circle of Quality. But I just wanted to say I'm super proud of our entire early childhood staff. I have 65 members who support our early childhood program. I know firsthand through all of my daily observations and interactions that they go above and beyond for each and every preschooler to support their authentic intentional learning experiences. But this Gold Circle Award and recognition just reaffirms that we're an awesome program and we have the highest quality standards for our preschoolers.
Thank you.
I would also just like to note too, in talking with Director Mersou earlier, this is the third time that our early childhood education program has received this honor. So it's fantastic. Again, congratulations to Fox Ridge Early Childhood Center. District 303 is also home to two National Blue Ribbon Award Schools for 2022, Norton Creek Elementary School and St. Charles North High School, each recognized for their overall academic performance. They are among 297 schools in the nation and two of 17 schools in Illinois to receive that honor. The U.S. Department of Education recognizes National Blue Ribbon Schools as exemplary high-performing or exemplary achievement gap-closing schools based on student scores, subgroup student scores, and graduation rates. These schools serve as models of effective school practices for state and district educators and other schools throughout the nation. Congratulations to the teams at Norton Creek and St. Charles North, led by Principals Tony White and Shanna Lewis, along with their students and families on this achievement. Principal White and Principal Lewis, would you like to share a few words with the board and our community?
Thank you very much, President Fairgreave, District 303 Board, Dr. Gordon, and thank you all so much for letting us come on out here and just for, for celebrating with us. This is certainly an exciting accomplishment. I can't speak for North, so when I was talking to Shanna, I'm gonna bat leadoff, and then she's gonna bat cleanup. And so, so just to kinda, just to kinda lead off, there are kind of two phrases that really sum up kind of the, the focus of our work in Norton Creek. So one is, every child deserves a great place to learn. Every adult deserves a great place to work. And every family deserves a school that they could be proud to send their child to. And to that end, we work to build environments that everyone can find success in. Emotion drives attention, attention drives learning. If we care for the heart, we can engage the mind. And so those are the things that we've really focused on, on top of just executing the curriculum and, and, and building a system of, of multi-tiered system of supports that can engage all learners everywhere, that we have that depth of knowledge and that we could focus on doing kind of one thing at a time really well. So I'm really endlessly proud of each one of our staff members at Norton Creek, present and past. And I'm also incredibly proud of all of the work that our Eagles and their families have put into. So thank you so much.
I would also like to thank this opportunity. I think at the end of the podcast, which I know everyone's listened to a couple of times, I said that I could talk about North anytime. I think that it's just such an awesome place for kids. And there's two reasons for that. It's the community and it's our staff. Last year, when we got nominated, I had been here for a couple of months. And I was joking, I was like, I am killing it. Like, I just got here. And I say that jokingly because of all of the pieces that come into this and recognizing how hard our students work and how hard our teachers work. And we, we have two facets also. We look at that belonging piece. How can we make sure that every student and staff member feels like this is belonging and that they belong here and this is their school? Recognizing that we have sometimes done things unintentionally that might create barriers, but really having that look and saying, what do we need to do a little bit better so we can increase that? And our instruction, the craft of teaching. I always like to call it a craft because that's where our kids are gonna get better and that's where they're getting that in the classroom. And we know that when we have those quality teachers and those systems in place that our kids are gonna, are grow and they're gonna get better. And I can't say enough about the supports that we've had. Our teachers are there really trying to make sure that they're looking at each student and trying to find a way to help them be successful. I think any good leader has a great team. Can't say enough about the team that I have when we were nominated. They really came to bat in trying to be able to identify all of those successes that we offer as a school and as in, within a community. When we look at the successes that we have across the community and all of our schools, we recognize that that comes from a support and partnership from the community, the board, and our parents. So we just wanted to say on behalf of North, thank you to all of you for that. Thank you.
Thanks. Thank you very much to Principal White and Principal Lewis. And congratulations again to Norton Creek Elementary School and St. Charles North High School.
Yeah, incredible honor for all three of the schools. And as superintendent, similar to Ms. Lewis, wow, I'm crushing it, three months in, got two blue ribbons. Honestly, just so proud of our staff. So proud of, of the work that goes in each and every day to support our young people in each of our schools out there. I, I am so proud of our staff for the work that you do on a daily basis. Thank you. Thank you from the bottom of our heart for the work that you do to make a significant difference in the lives of young people throughout D303. That's all you do. Just each day, show up, make a significant difference in the lives of others. I appreciate you so much for all that you do. Thank you. Ms. Lewis, would you join me back up at the microphone? We, we also have another celebration, recognizing an individual who has a significant impact in art design and media education in Illinois.
I'm just gonna take over the rest of this evening.
I'm good. The mic is yours.
Yes, we, last year, actually, I was here in the spring, I think it was, recognizing Danielle Shepherd. And again, she is being recognized in the state of Illinois. And I actually invited our lead teacher, Stephanie Dodd. Danielle is, I think, coming from the parking lot, but to say, to say a few words. So I thought I'd just say a couple jokes as I'm stalling. No, honestly, Stephanie, if you wanna come on up, and then I can wait for Danielle. She was running from. Okay, so I was born in, Philip, no, I'm just kidding. No, one of the things that strikes me about Danielle is that she is a very creative instructor and she brings out the best in students. And when you look at some of the work that they are producing, sometimes you're saying, wow, like, this is amazing for our kids to do that, be able to do this. And I know that she is encouraging to students to explore their strengths to make sure that they are defining art the way that they want it to be defined. And so we can kind of follow those successes for her as well. But I know that Stephanie works with her more closely as her lead teacher. So that's why we invited Stephanie to come up here. I was almost resorting to jokes, but so thank you. Yes, thank you. This is Danielle. I only prepared a few things. Danielle is currently in her fourth year of teaching. So I think to be able to be awarded twice with two amazing awards is absolutely phenomenal. She is such a bright spot in the day for so many students. As her lead teacher, she makes my job easy, being a team player, a collaborator, and brings topics inside and outside of the classroom to talk about and always looks for ways to be kind to other staff and to students. She describes the philosophy of always doing what's best, sorry. She subscribes to the philosophy of always doing what's best for the students. She will come in early, she will stay late, she creates many videos, sits with students one-on-one, and creates personal connections with all of her students. She knows that it is the personal connections that she creates that are important with her students, which help her to get the best work that she can from them. I cannot think of a better teacher to be granted this award. And we are very proud to know that she is a teacher at St. Charles North High School.
Did you grab the microphone?
This is actually just my third year of teaching at the end of the semester. I started teaching journey in January 2020, beginning of COVID. It's been a ride, but I truly can say I would rather be nowhere else. I have an amazing team led by Steph Dodd. And the support that I receive at St. Charles North High School allows me to be the amazing teacher that I can be because of how we support one another and the amazing community that we work in. So thank you.
Wow, thank you. Thank you. Very impressive that a third-year teacher with those accolades. Danielle, thank you so much for what you bring for, to our students and to the rest of the staff as well. Not to be outdone, we have some students that we would like to recognize who have been named National Merit Scholarship finalist from St. Charles East, Matthew Hall, and Nathan Thornburg. From St. Charles North, Andrew Nesterovar. And at both of the schools, we had 18 students who, who reached the commended category in 16 students at North. So for Matthew, Nathan, Andrew, a huge congratulations from all of us to all of you. So thank you. So with that, you all are gonna be here for another two hours, right? You're gonna hang out with us? Please, thank you for coming out tonight. But please head on home, or you can, you can stay if you want. But you're more than happy to, to hit the road. Thank you all for coming out tonight.
Thank you.
All right.
Okay, so, are you good?
Back to me.
So we're gonna move to item 3B, which is the communication update.
So with us tonight is our Chief Communication Officer, Scott Harvey. Scott will giving us an update on the communication plan overall. I could not be more pleased with Mr. Harvey's work, his efforts, the, the work that he's doing with our team, our principals, and other community partnerships that he's already starting to cultivate. But with that, I'm gonna hand it over to Scott to talk about the overall D303 communication plan.
Thank you, Paul. Good evening, Board. I wanted to just give you a, a baseline of what I've had a chance to experience and observe the last three and a half months since I started on July 1st. And it really focuses on four themes, building connections, community, communications tools that are at our disposal within our office and how we utilize those, and our community engagement plan, which many of you have had a chance to observe and witness. And then our comprehensive communications plan, which is something that we'll be working on for an extended period to really drive the future communication needs of this district. So, starting with the connections, and it starts with my fabulous communications team. And I really want to acknowledge the work of Janelle Magana, Gemma Atta, and Karen Bavra, who you've probably had a chance to interact with as you come to our district offices. And they are just a joy to be around and help elevate the work that we're doing on a daily basis. So I'm just grateful to work with them and really have leaned into their guidance these first few months on the job. So I wanted to acknowledge the work that they're doing on a daily basis. It's really important that we build a strong communications foundation. And this really applies to everyone, but having the opportunity to be in our schools and connect with our community, our students, and really get involved in some of the communications within our committee work within our district and outside of our district has been really rewarding to get to know others and know how this can drive the work of our district. So I've been really grateful for those opportunities. And that's been a big focus area to really help understand how we can improve in our communications and have just a better access to our public. Communications tools, our communications department utilizes myriad of tools to get information to our students, to our families, and to our community. And so I've spent a lot of time these first few months just becoming familiar with those tools, utilizing those tools, and understanding how beneficial they are for us and for the people that are receiving that information. So that includes our district website, our newsletters, our social media channels. We utilize press releases to help elevate the story of D303. And it's awesome to hear a few of, from our schools tonight. And those are stories that we've been positioned to help elevate. So it's really rewarding to see them acknowledged tonight as well. We have mass communication reporting tools through our parent leak system. Freedom of Information Act request is also falls under our office. We have a podcast that Paul and I have been involved with to help, again, elevate those stories. So these and other channels are really vital to consistently communicate with our public. Our communications plan, and it seems like yesterday that I was in front of you telling you about our listen, learn, return. Well, we've been very active with that communications plan to date. And I'm pleased to share that we've concluded our in-person community sessions. And now we're about to conclude our in-person staff sessions. And then we will go toward a digital survey so that people who weren't able to attend in person can share their feedback with our districts. So we're really trying to get as much feedback as we can. And as Paul and I have shared in those meetings, it's really important that we're listening and learning in these first, this first round so that we can take some really key data from these, from these, the, the feedback and develop action items from that feedback. And then come back in our return sessions and really inform our public what we intend to do with what we've learned, how it may work with some of the existing initiatives and how it may be independent of that. And we can really just help do work of the people based on their feedback. And then our comprehensive communication plan. So this is something that will really drive us internally and externally for years to come. And it was important that I, as I absorb what's happening within our office, assess where are the tools that we're utilizing? Where are we successful and where can we see opportunities for growth? And I think the key term is standardization. The big thing that we can do as an office to elevate what we're doing internally and externally so that there's a standard process for a lot of the things that we do on a daily basis. And that includes just understanding where our mass communication systems are and how we, our uniform and our voice, not only at the district level, but at the school level, our website and the information that we're putting on our website and making sure that it's consistent across the district and throughout our school websites, our social media platforms, and again, providing the standardization and consistency across those platforms. And then just an overall style guide so that we, as a district, know how we go about communication so that, again, we're speaking in that single voice and make sure that there's no lapse in that communication as we communicate to our internal staff, to our students, and to our external community, that there is a consistency in what we're doing. So the standardization is the big thing that we'll try to execute within that comprehensive communication plan. So those are the four items that I wanted to address with you and I'd be happy to answer any questions.
I, I attended two of the, two, I guess, three of the Listen and Learn because I got also sat in the staff. You, you did a great job of facilitating that. I have to say, we have a community that likes to be engaged, for sure. You got lots of information, I think, and learned a lot. But I'm looking forward to what you're going to come back with and how you're putting all the data together. Because I think we heard some real positives and some real challenges and real opportunities for us to grow. So thank you for doing that. It's very impressive.
I'll jump in and say I attended some of the Listen, Learn, Return, and I'm going to be attending the final one. And I just really appreciate the way you've engaged with the various attendees, the way you've laid out the communications. I've really appreciated your attention, your focus, your drive. So thank you, as most of the community has said and board members have said, that communication was something we wanted to focus on. And I'm just, you're doing a fantastic job and I look forward to more. And thank you so much for working so hard.
Thank you. And I want to thank the community that have come out to our sessions. And I know some are in attendance this evening. So it's really great to hear from them directly, meet them, and understand what their perspectives are and what feedback they want to share with us. Obviously, they have a passion for the success of this district. And so it's really important that we can meet them face-to-face, introduce ourselves, because we are new, but also learn what is, from their perspective, our challenges, our opportunities for growth, and what they're proud of.
I'll add just one more quick thought, since I think you both kind of said it all. But yeah, this certainly was an area of need for us. And I think you've stepped right in, and both with the, kind of, the continuity of the delivery, right? And consistency of the delivery, it's been really refreshing. And it was one of the things we all talked about, just consistently getting the word out to the community, to the constituents that care so much about what's going on. And it has been a, a breath of fresh air. So thank you for your hard work.
Any other questions, comments? Okay. All right. Thank you.
Thank you.
Scott, thank you. Next piece up is the Strategic Planning Committee update. I'll take this one. We had our first meeting a few weeks ago on September 20th. Just an outstanding group of individuals, staff members from across our, our district, representing administrative, classified, certified staff members coming together to really think about the long-term vision of D303. What we started was with the, beginning with the end in mind. So our, one of our goals was to make sure that we were building community among our group. One of the really important things that we do is we come together, we, we, we learn about each other, and we slowly grow, because this team's going to be gathered, together for a number of months. So it's really important to be able to build that understanding. And then we built the understanding in the why behind the strategic plan. Really making sure that we were crystal clear with what this was about. And it is about that pathway forward, about real opportunities to move our district from that good to great. We described the scope of the work that will entail, which entails the work that the board started with the values. And I'll come back to that in a second. And it entails reviewing the vision and mission, the current vision, mission of our district, getting into strategic priorities, goals, and action steps. A very thoughtful process for our district to move through. We also spoke about the feedback loops. The feedback loops, and this is really important. It's not this group of 20 or, or so people only who, who are gonna help create the strategic plan. It is the ongoing feedback from, from this group to the board, from this group to administrators, this group to staff, this group back out to parents and others. So we're gonna have multiple opportunities for individuals to give us feedback. Because at the end of the day, powerful, impactful strategic plans, our strategic plans where, where the, the district, the, the community buys into it, our staff buy into it. It does not matter, Paul Gordon really comes up with some really neat strategic plan by himself. That's not what is going to transform this district. What's gonna transform the district is a thoughtful, intentional plan that allows us to move forward. So they were excited about that. And then we really started digging into the work, the work that the board started around the values, the values of belonging, perseverance, and achievement. To define those, to start to draft that definition, what does that mean? Because we all have different definitions when we hear the words, the values that the board selected, belonging, perseverance, and achievement. We're, we're really getting into the, the weeds and making sure that each word is very intentional and very purposeful for why it is selected. So that's, that's really where we're at. We're gonna be meeting again this Thursday for our second meeting. And we're gonna pick back up on the value definitions of, of where we're at, what we're doing. So that's the overall work that we've been doing on the strategic plan. It's literally one, two-hour meetings to, for this update. Any questions, comments?
I don't think so, so you can move to the next.
All right. I like that. The Equity Committee update, I'm gonna bring Dr. Igo up as a lead facilitator of that group.
Good evening. We actually had our first meeting on September 28th. And we had a full-day meeting, so we met from eight to three. It was really a great group of people. I can't really speak about just how exciting it was to have everybody in the room and excited to do that work. Very similar to what Dr. Gordon spoke about. We really started our day in that idea of creating a sense of community. Where really, it's really important that we continue to do that, be here, be you belong. Make sure that everybody knows where their voice is, because we need to hear from everybody. So we definitely spent some time doing that. We spent some time really understanding what is the scope of the work? What is it we are being asked to do? What are our deliverables? And what is our timetable that we're working on? We then really dove in and spent some time understanding, like, the vision and the mission that was created by our DEI Committee from last spring. What does that mean? What does that look like? And then understanding the definitions as they relate to equity, diversity, and inclusion. So that we all had like a common ground that we were working from and a common understanding. So that we all had like a common ground that we were working from and a common understanding. We then spent pretty much the remainder of that day digging, taking a really deep dive into that equity audit so that we could understand what is in that equity audit, what are the strengths that came out through that audit? What are some of the opportunities that were identified? We also worked through some different articles. We did some jigsawing really to understand like what has been done in equity in the past, what has been tried, what's worked, what hasn't worked? So that we could really start to dive in and understand kind of whatever, where are our opportunities? And what might be some threats that we want to be thinking about? So we were really kind of focused around that whole idea of that SWAT process, right? Strengths, weaknesses, opportunity and threats. And then we spent a little bit of time really talking through what questions does all of this lead you to? What questions do you have? Because anytime we look at data, we should always have more questions than answers. And we identified some different questions to look through so that we had a place to start in terms of what's the research that we're going to look at so that we can then turn around and really build a process. The homework that we provided for the staff for that day was we provided them with three different equity plans that had been written across three different districts so that they had the opportunity to review those plans, understand, you know, get a, get a feel for them of what was included, what was not included. And then we're going to use that information to say, so what did you like about these plans? What didn't you like about these plans? How, what, what might we want to include and what might we not want to include? So that we can have that opportunity. Also, like Dr. Gordon talked about, we talked a lot about how this fits into the bigger picture of the strategic plan. It is a piece of the strategic plan. It's not that it sits separate and that there'll be those ongoing feedback loops. So we'll be constantly keeping the Strategic Plan Committee up to date and then coming back, but also reaching out very much like we did with the Diversity Equity and Inclusion Committee from last year where it went to building teams, from building teams to grade level teams and back. We took some feedback. So those feedback loops will be there as well. Our next meeting is next week, October 20th. And we'll do a couple of after, after school meetings. And we have another full day meeting that we're kind of not sure when we're playing or we've kind of got to hold on for January, but we might move that depending on where we are in the work. Happy to answer any questions that you have about our work.
I, I just have one. At one of the listen and learn, there was a teacher who said, we're not doing anything on equity, hadn't heard a thing. I got to wondering, I, you, I think those of us who knew there was work being done, we're kind of startled by that. And you can't expect that everybody's reading every board minute or committee.
Sure. We did a lot of communicating on that last year, but that doesn't mean that people don't miss stuff. So we can certainly.
Well, she was saying it sounded like we had done a lot, you know, last year and we are doing nothing now. So I, I wondered if there was an expect, you, you talked about that you're going, that, you know, you will be going back to buildings, but if there is a communication loop, then maybe we could.
Absolutely. So just to kind of be clear about how we formed the committee, a kind of a charge statement that lined up all of the things, what was our deliverables for this year? Here's what things that we are going to work on. And we asked, we sent it to everybody and gave everybody the opportunity to participate. But we will certainly keep that ongoing feedback loop going. It'll go into our newsletter so that people have that as well. So they know where we are.
What were the three schools that you, you looked at the equity plans from three other districts?
Oh. Hold please. Yes, we looked at U forty six. We looked at Naperville two oh three and we looked at Wheeling Communities Consolidated School District twenty one. All right. Thank you. Have a great night.
Okay, moving to item three E, Board Members Report on Committee Meetings. Can we start with Business Services?
I'm ready. Okay, so we last had Business Services, that was Monday, September 26th. And it was a short meeting. It was 14 minutes long. It was called to order at six oh seven. We did not have any citizens comments. The superintendent's highlight was North's homecoming weekend and we, our week events were taking place. And we had two and report, financial statement reports, one from Mid Valley and then one, and of course our D three oh three report. And the next item that was discussed was bus purchasing. Mr. Adaway presented a proposal for the purchases of buses for the 2023, 24 school year. And it was decided that we would put this on the consent agenda for tonight. The next item was the substitute pay increase and Ms. Collins reviewed a proposal that would make changes to the district's substitute pay rates and that will be on for action tonight. Additionally, the frontline employee evaluation management system that Ms. Collins discussed will be on for action tonight as well. And then we adjourned at six 21 PM. And that was Business Services.
Thank you for that, Mrs. Barker. Next, Learning and Teaching.
Okay. Hello, everyone. So for those of you who were able to attend, you saw that we've kind of taken a little bit of a different format for some of these sessions, more of a working session format. So the L and T committee meeting was quite communicative. We had a lot of nice discussion regarding some of the things that we're working on, most notably the student achievement report. So Dr. Igo went through a number of things regarding the previous student achievement report. And for those who are not aware, the Learning and Teaching Department writes the student achievement report each November and evaluates students' performance, curriculum and instruction services, make recommendations for any changes. So that was kind of the spirit of the meeting that we were involved in. So briefly, just to kind of convey what the purpose of the report and then for some of the things that we came out of from that discussion. So the purpose of the report is to analyze the progress toward the 2022 benchmarks and then the ultimate 2025 goals. Describe any recommendations or action steps to ensure that continuous improvement that we are all hoping to see. Identify any anticipated curriculum and instruction updates in the upcoming school year and then communicate academic achievement and growth within the community. So what was decided, and there was again, a lot of discussion. So I would urge folks to, who are deeply interested in this, to go back to our meeting because as I mentioned, there was a lot of discussion. But kind of the, the thick of it was the overall progress of the 2022 benchmarks and the 2025 goal for those on track indicators, proficiency towards grade level standards in both ELA and math standards measured by the IAR and the SAT assessments. The overall climate and culture across the district measured by the student survey data and overall attendance. And then lastly, college and career readiness indicators as measured by a percent of students earning early college credit. So that's the AP and dual credit and then prevent, percent of students on track for graduation, students who are earning a C or better in Algebra one prior to, prior to entering high school and then Algebra two prior to their senior year. There were a couple of comments from the board just discussing areas of academic achievement. Most notably, there were a couple of cohorts specifically that were mentioned from the board. They now escaped me a little bit. I'm trying to scour through my notes, but there were a couple of age groups that we were particularly interested in seeing their ongoing improvement. And I'll revert back to my notes at some point and give that update. There was also a question regarding Compass Academy and how we will be provided with that information for their performance so that we can ensure ongoing improvement in that area as well. And then unless I am missing anything, that was essentially what we had discussed that evening. Becky, anything that I'm missing from that? Board members, anything else that I missed? Okay. So the next meeting will be Monday, October 17th at five 30 PM.
Thank you very much for that update. The final committee meeting that we should have a report on is policy.
Okay, the policy meeting was September 26th. And we met and discussed two policies, transportation four dot one one zero as well as, no, that's, and then we talked about, not another policy, but we talked about citizen, the statement being read before citizen comments. And we had a lively discussion and the transportation policy is not quite finished yet. We will have that to the board when it's updated. And the statement for citizen comments is finished and will be brought, is now being in use. There we go. And I don't believe we had any future redundant items as of yet because we don't know for sure what's next. And we will soon. November 28th is the next meeting. We will see you there.
Thank you very much, Mrs. Bell. Any questions or comments? Okay, we do not have any items on the agenda tonight for discussion. So we'll move to item four, which is the consent agenda. Do I have a motion to approve the consent agenda, items four A through four O?
So moved.
Second.
Okay, thank you, Mr. McNally and Mrs. McCabe for the second. Does anyone want to pull something from this consent agenda? Okay. Ms. Marcin, would you please take role?
Mrs. Bell?
Yes.
Mr. Kuchar?
Yes.
Mr. Lachner?
Yes.
Mrs. McCabe?
Yes.
Mr. McNally?
Yes.
Mrs. Barker?
Yes.
And Mrs. Fairgreen?
Yes. Motion passes seven to zero. Moving to section five for action, item five A is the substitute pay increase. Can I have a motion to approve the substitute pay increase?
So moved.
Second.
Okay, Mrs. McCabe for the first and Mr. McNally for the second. Is there any discussion on this item?
I, I just want to clarify something. I had been approached by an administrator, an ex administrator about whether the the retirement pay was only for those who were retired or those could, did it cover people who had resigned or were no longer active? And it, and I asked Marcy Conlon and she said it is only for those who are retired and receiving TRS. So I think just to make it clear that if somebody has chosen to not be teaching anymore but hasn't retired, this pay will not be for them. Does that make sense?
Thank you for that additional clarification. Any other comments, questions for discussion? Okay, Ms. Marcin, would you please take the role?
Mr. Kuchar?
Yes.
Mr. Lachner?
Yes.
Mrs. McCabe?
Yes.
Mr. McNally?
Yes.
Mrs. Barker?
Yes.
Mrs. Bell?
Yes.
And Mrs. Fairgreen?
Yes. Motion passes seven to zero. Item five B related to the frontline employee evaluation management system. Can I have a motion to approve?
So moved.
Second.
Okay, Mrs. Bell and Mr. Kuchar. Is there any discussion? Okay, Ms. Marcin, please take the role.
Mr. Lachner?
Abstain.
Mrs. McCabe?
Yes.
Mr. McNally?
Abstain.
Mrs. Barker?
Yes.
Mrs. Bell?
Yes.
Mr. Kuchar?
Yes.
And Mrs. Fairgreen?
Yes. Motion passes with five in favor and two abstain. Item five C relates to board member registration for the Kishawaki Division Meeting. Can I have a motion to approve the board member registration for the Kishawaki Division Meeting?
So moved.
Second. Okay, Mr. Kuchar for the first and Mrs. McCabe for the second. Is there any discussion? Okay, Ms. Marcin, please take the role.
Mrs. McCabe?
Yes.
Mr. McNally?
Yes.
Mrs. Barker?
Yes.
Mrs. Bell?
Yes.
Mr. Kuchar?
Yes.
Mr. Lachner?
Yes.
Mrs. Fairgreen?
Yes. Motion passes seven to zero in favor. Item five D relates to memorandum of understanding. Can I have a motion to approve the SCTNM memorandum of understanding regarding the contract bus aid?
So moved.
Second.
Okay, Mrs. McCabe for the first and Mrs. Bell for the second. Is there any discussion? Okay, Ms. Marcin, please take role.
Mr. McNally?
Yes.
Mrs. Barker?
Yes.
Mrs. Bell?
Yes.
Mr. Kuchar?
Yes.
Mr. Lachner?
Yes.
Mrs. McCabe?
Yes.
And Mrs. Fairgreen?
Yes. Motion passes seven to zero in favor. Item six for information, you should note in your packet, there is the District three zero three financial report, Mid Valley Financial Report, Freedom of Information Act requests, district enrollment and a very new item, the IASB resolutions for the 2022 Delegate Assembly, which you will definitely want to review. With that new business, do we have any new business items from the board?
I'd like to add to the board's consideration for an agenda that item, either a discussion about the fitness or the appropriateness of the ambition that's reflected in the 2025 quantitative goals that show up in the student achievement reports. And I'll remind the board that those goals were first introduced in a November 2021 L and T meeting. And there was a discussion about those goals, but no further discussion about the appropriateness or fitness of those goals as the district's ambition. And so I just suggest that the board have a conversation about adopting those goals as interim goals pending the completion of the strategic plan or some other discussion about whether or not the ambition reflected in those 2025 numbers and the interim benchmarks that are described both in last year's SAR and would carry forward into this SAR as to whether or not those are appropriately ambitious.
Okay, have we discussed that at the Learning and Teaching Committee? Or is that where, is that not where that should reside initially?
I, I think my suggestion here is that the Learning and Teaching Discussion, of course, should take place. But it is my recommendation that we take action on that issue as an adoption of those as official goals of the district as they reflect in the SAR as stated goals. And the board has taken no action on those goals.
Okay.
Are you suggesting then that in November, the SAR is going to come out, then following that presentation, the next month, maybe? I'm trying to think how to time wise.
My consideration of the issue is this, there is, those goals will be published again in the SAR without the board having taken action on them. And so just as we were going through the discussion about the SAR and the previous L and T, and as I heard the report tonight, it occurred to me that we have yet as a board to really adopt those as district goals. They're really, they never moved past that discussion in L and T. And so if we're going to hold people to account for those goals, either after it's published or at, at the first available, I believe that the board should take action on those. And, and I think there's broad agreement amongst the board, if I risk speaking on behalf of other board members, about the size of that ambition. Procedurally, though, we have never said that those are the goals that the board has endorsed.
Okay, so the conversation can happen at the November L and T meeting. Maybe we chew on it enough to, but what you're really asking for is board action.
That's correct.
Okay.
Okay, so what I would recommend then is it goes back to Learning and Teaching Committee in November. We'll have the student achievement report out and then part of that discussion should be that we bring it forward for an action agenda item in December. Is everybody in concurrence? That timeline at least. Okay.
Just a procedural matter, hasn't it just been brought forth as an action item for December?
I think, I think that's what he was requesting. It hasn't been brought forth as an action item for December. It's been brought forth for an action item and I think we're meeting that. I've set the timeline on it.
I just wanted to, it was just a purely procedural, so.
So for clarification, the discussion would occur, what Mr. Lachner is moving would occur at the L and T meeting? And then we would put it for action in the subsequent regular board meeting?
Correct.
Okay, and that would proceed then us making those goals official? I think that if I'm not mistaken, I think that was the concern. I don't want to speak for you, Mr. Lachner, but was that what you were saying?
What I'm trying to convey is that we have these, we will have published these goals twice without the board having taken action on them. And so if they are, if they are indeed the board's goals as reflected in the SAR, I believe we need to take action to prove them. I recognize fully that the, the strategic planning process is highly likely to modify those goals. At the same time, we will have published two. At the same time, we will have published two reports without board action endorsing the interim goals. And so I think, I understand why you would put it back to an L and T discussion. At the same time, the previous L and T discussions have had broad, um, consensus amongst administrators and the board. We could skip that cycle and have a concurrent, as Mrs. McCabe was suggesting, a concurrent action that approved those goals at the same time where the SAR was, was published. And I do believe it's more of a housekeeping thing, and what I'm endorsing is that the board has, through conversation and broad consensus, indicated its approval of those goals, but never done so officially.
Yeah, I understand that. My concern is procedurally, things always go through committee first. And then it's determined at that time, whether it should come to the full board for a vote. What we could certainly do is bring it to the October, Learning and Teaching, if the concern is the time, the timing. But we would have to adjust the agenda.
The October or November?
Um, the, I, I'm sensing that there is a concern around the urgency. So we would have to make some adjustments to the October Learning and Teaching Agenda.
But we won't have the SAR in October, it'll be in November. So you want to, I'm sorry. I thought, I had, thought you wanted the SAR to be voted on. Or just the goals?
Just the goals. Just the goals.
You're just looking to codify what we've done in the past.
So ideally, before it's published.
Okay.
Before being clean, it would be voted on.
Does that sound reasonable? Dr. Igo's not here at the moment, okay?
No, I think.
We, we did have discussion about it in the past. I think that, that much of the discussion could probably be, uh, relatively brief, I think. Uh, because it, it is an item that has been discussed, and I think, um, any, we should probably start with any concerns as opposed to kind of rehashing the entire discussion.
Yeah, I think those are great points. I would leave it up to Mr. Kucher and, and Mrs. McCabe to facilitate that.
I don't see any reason why we wouldn't be able to do that, right?
No, I think the confusion comes, um, I, I understand what you're saying. I think that's a procedural piece. The confusion comes that we're in the midst of the strategic plan. And as long as we're all clear, the, those goals could change once we do the strategic plan. So what we vote on in November or December, whenever it lands in our lap, doesn't necessarily mean that we're not going to change those goals.
Right.
I think you clarified that point right at, kind of at the outset, but I, I, I do agree, i- if we're going into another cycle, um, we should be codifying what we're doing. And we should, we should as a board, stand behind what we're saying.
Okay, does that make sense then? Okay.
I'm not.
Are you good?
Thank you.
Okay, thank you.
Um, and I had one other item that I think we need to get on the agenda. Um, since I'm the delegate to the, um, Triple I, um, the, uh, resolutions, there are very few. And it looks like it's not very controversial this year, so take a look at those. And then if we could have a chance, so I know how to vote.
Yes, yep, that will be included. Okay. Okay, okay, thank you for those comments. Um, do we have any citizen comments? Okay, we do. Um, Mrs. McCabe, would you please read the statement?
I am excited to read the statement before public comment is brand, brand new to our, our board. During the public comment period, members of the public body who wish to speak are asked to first state their name and community in which they reside. Each individual will have up to three minutes to address the board on a topic of their choosing. We ask all individuals who address the board to do so with respect and civility towards others. Please note that personnel matters are sensitive and confidential. We also want to inform our speakers that all regular, special and committee meetings are live streamed and available for viewing at any time on the district's YouTube channel. While the board will not respond to today's public comment during this meeting, we are committed to listening to you to help support our work for the district and on behalf of our students, staff, families and community members. Thank you.
Thank you, Mrs. McCabe. Um, with that, may I please ask for Sam Ledoux to step forward?
So guys, Sam Ledoux, I live in South Elgin, and I have five kids that'll be coming through D three oh three. The oldest is at Redling right now, and that's the one that I want to speak to. Um, the theme earlier tonight was people crushing it. So I come offering an opportunity to do that in another facet of our educational service, and that's transportation. As it stands right now, my experience for two plus years, uh, my son is now a quarter of the way through his eighth grade year. For two plus years, the stance from the district has been, you designate a primary residence, and that's the only residence that the district will transport to. We have, in our situation, a divorced family. So my son lives in two houses, and both houses are in district boundaries. Both houses are in, um, um, qualify for transportation and both addresses go to the same school, Redling. So we're not asking for a new route, we're not asking for new drivers, we're not asking for any of that. We're just simply asking that my son be transported to the house he lives in. On some days, it's with mom, some days it's with dad. Um, I've been working on this for two plus years, started this in sixth grade. I understand that there were other circumstances, so I've been very patient, but this is why I'm, I'm bringing this to you now, is he's in eighth grade. I've called all the surrounding districts, Geneva three oh four, Batavia one oh one, Burlington three oh one, Algonquin three hundred, and Elgin U forty-six. And, and I posed to them the same scenario and question that I did the first time that I called our district, uh, when my son was in sixth grade. And all five of those, before I could even finish describing the situation, kind of laughed and said, well, of course we'll transfer to both addresses, just give us the addresses and then we'll, we'll, we'll tell you the route. That's not been my experience here so far, so I'm bringing it to your attention to do the right thing, and I trust that you will. Thank you.
Thank you. Uh, next, Diana Soltes.
Good evening, thank you so much for being here. My name's Diana Soltes, I live in St. Charles, and I appreciate the work that you do. I know it's not easy. I really appreciated the listening, um, and, uh, learn and return sessions. I think they were important, but it's what's done with them that are even more important. Um, so I'm here to remind the board that the parents and taxpayers of St. Charles, uh, D three oh three, um, are not paying for its schools to be involved in political indoctrination activities, rather education of core curricula, specifically, um, English, math, science and actual history. If one looks at actual history, they look at the word equity being a Marxist term that causes separation rather than unity. And, um, I'd rather have students have an opportunity for equal opportunities. And what they do with that is up to them and their families. D three oh three should not be focused on the sexual indoctrination of children, um, separation of kids by color of their skin, or causing kids to question their gender and other issues. They really need to be focused on the basics of teaching the kids, um, the items that I had mentioned. Many teachers continue to impart their political viewpoints under the guise of procedures versus policies in the classroom. I've been, uh, youth minister as a, outside of work activity for seventeen years, and I've never seen the kids more hurting and more need of help than in the last couple of years. And there's a lot of reasons behind that. Um, but I believe some of the things I've mentioned, um, contribute to that. Um, the, um, policies versus procedures, I have a personal example. Over five years ago, my son, um, was in a class, and the teacher specifically told him, do not vote the way your parents tell you to vote, they don't know what's really going on, and you'll learn someday that it's right. And then begin, and continued to impart his political viewpoint. When I called the school, they said, well, he's tenured and he's almost retiring, so it's not that big a deal. It was a big deal, because it made my son feel very ostracized. And when they were spending half of the class talking about that versus the core subject they were supposed to be studying, I have a problem with that. So, um, if that kind of influence and behavior occurs, it has no place, uh, in the school. Um, I've heard from many, um, both educators and students, that some of the educators believe that they hold the moral high ground over the parents. Um, and anything beyond the basic curricula is the parents enter right. The parents need to have the say-so in what gets taught, what goes on in the households, and what goes on in the schools, quite frankly. Um, so again, just a reminder of those things, I thank you for what you do. Um, and let's continue to strive to increase our test scores out of the fiftieth percentile, because when I had a very close associate, um, come and they had taken their son to Notre Dame, he was told that they no longer, uh, consider St. Charles, um, uh, college prep. So thank you again, and have a good evening.
Thank you. Okay, um, may I have a motion to adjourn to closed session for the purposes of the appointment, employment, compensation, discipline, performance or dismissal of specific employees, specific individuals who serve as independent contractors in a park, recreational or educational setting, or specific volunteers of the public body or legal counsel for the public body, including hearing testimony on a complaint lodged against an employee, a specific individual who serves as an independent contractor in a park, recreational or educational setting, or a volunteer of the public body, or against legal counsel for the public body to determine its validity.
So moved.
May I have a second?
Second.
Okay, thank you, Mrs. Bell and Mr. Lackner. Ms. Marzan, would you please take the roll call vote to adjourn to closed session?
Mrs. Barker?
Yes.
Mrs. Bell?
Yes.
Mr. Kusher?
Yes.
Mr. Lackner?
Yes.
Mrs. McCabe?
Yes.
Mr. McNally?
Yes.
And Mrs. Fairgreen?
Yes, motion passes seven to zero. You will now adjourn to closed session at seven oh one PM.